Welcome to tonight's forum for the Whitman County Commissioners Race between candidates Cody Finch and Chad Weitzel.
Weitzel?
Weitzel. Excuse me. I'm Deb Olson, and I will be the moderator this evening. I would like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. I know that there's another party going on at the same time, and since most of us have always have at least probably been clients of performance physical therapy. So, no. You got it? Okay. Thank you. I would thank all -- this forum will be recorded and available on our website hopefully by noon tomorrow. The website address is, well, the link on the website is lvvpolman.org. We will begin our meetings with our, we begin all our meetings with our nonpartisan statement. Excuse me, I'm just a little. The League acts in support of or in opposition to selected governmental issues which its members have studied. It does not support or oppose candidates, factions, or political parties. League members as individuals are urged to work in the political party of their choice. To protect the League's nonpartisan policy, guidelines regarding political activities of the Board of Directors are reviewed frequently. The League of Women Voters is fully committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion in principle and practice. These concepts are central to our current and future success in engaging all individuals, households, communities, and policymakers in creating a more perfect democracy. We acknowledge and honor the sovereignty of the First Peoples of the Palouse Region and their descendants, including our neighbors the Nez Perce, Ni'mi'pu, and Palouse Tribes, the Confederated Tribes of the Cabal Reservation, and the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. Before we begin, let's review how things are done. We ask that you write your questions on the cards on your seat. You may ask as many questions as you want. You can, and you can start writing questions now. When done, raise the card and it will be collected. League member, Lenis, seated at the front of the room, sort the questions by topic to avoid duplication, and so when similar questions are asked, they may be grouped and paraphrased to ensure the question, and to ensure questions are legible. To help out the moderator, myself, please write as clearly as possible, and big. They also, okay. We will get to as many questions as possible as time allows. If we don't get to your question, please contact the candidates in person and talk to them. That's what they're here for. Turn off or silence your cellphones, and refrain from clapping or booing or any other disruptive behavior. We will begin with opening remarks. Each candidate will have two minutes. So we will begin with Cody.
Hi, I'm Cody Finch. I'm a fifth-generation Whitman County rancher, and I've got a young family, three kids. I got into this race because I was seeing some issues in the community, and I want to make a difference. And we're here for the long haul. We, and I want to make sure this place is left better for the future generations than where it is now. I think there's some really low-hanging fruit for county issues out there, that we need more transparency and accountability, that we need to be proactive, not reactive, to the issues that are constantly coming at us. We have this, we have these market value tax assessments that I think everyone's gotten that are 20 years behind, and now we're finally dealing with the catching up to that. And whether it's that, or win code, or anything else, we're always trying to claw our way back to being current, and we need to be more forward-thinking. And as a county, we need to help our businesses. We need to establish new industries, new businesses. We need to bring in more people, and while staying a small and rural community, we need to, we need to create our own path forward and really dictate how that will turn out for us. So, thank you all for coming.
Chad?
Chad Weitzel. I was appointed Whitman County Commissioner in March of this year, and running for the, complete the term through next year. So I've been a farrier now for 23 years, and there's a whole host of things, and we've talked about a lot of our intros. But so I guess I'm going to skip that and move on to a couple of things that I've been working on as a commissioner right now that I've found really interesting. One of the things has been the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee, and we are trying to make a sustainable aquifer for all of Pullman and Moscow because they're, we're all on the same aquifer. We've done a lot of research and continuing that research, contacting landowners, figuring out how this aquifer actually works and where the recharge is so we can have sustainable water for the future. That is a huge thing for all of us, including business. It'll, you know, if we don't fix that problem, there will be no future for that. Another interesting one, board that I've been part of, is the Salmon Recovery Board, and through that I've been able to meet a whole, a lot of people in different walks of life, working with the Yumitilla Tribe primarily, and the Nez Perce does work with us a little bit. They have their own thing going, and we're trying to encourage more of that. We're working on salmon habitat, spawning habitat, and improve that for everyone. So those are a couple of forward-thinking issues that we're working on, and there's several, there's a ton of others, the budgets, you know, how we're going to grow this, how we're going to help grow Whitman County. But remember, government can't grow anything. All we can do is get out of the way of the industry and provide an area and an environment that they want to thrive in.
Thank you. We'll start with the questions. You have two minutes to answer each question. What are the three most critical functions of a county commissioner, and how does your experience prepare you for, to excel in these areas? And we'll start with Cody.
So the, I'd say the three biggest jobs, or however you phrase that, of the commissioners are one budget and two ordinance, and then really they need to be a representative of their county constituents in whatever aspect that may be, to the state, to, in the quasi-judicial role where they're, where they're settling a property tax dispute. What was the second half of your question?
How does your experience prepare you to excel in these areas?
Yeah, so I was a commercial project manager up at WSU on the contractor side. We ran a $3 million budget every year, and we would push through a lot of red tape, a lot of government hoops, trying to get the most out of that limited budget and get the most value for those dollars for WSU. And so I have, I have a lot of experience with paperwork. I have a lot of experience beating my head against that wall, and I, there's, there's just ways to, okay, so we can't do it this way, let's try it this way, that I think someone who thinks a little differently, a little outside the box, would be more likely to accomplish. I have, I have a farming and ranching background. I went to school for economics, but, you know, I'm just really a natural problem solver, and I think that would suit me well in that role.
Chad? Do you need me to repeat the question?
If you want, please.
What are the three most critical functions of a county commissioner, and how does your experience prepare you to excel in these areas?
Well, I have to agree with Cody for the most part. Even budgets are a huge part of what we do, establishing budgets. But the interesting thing about the county commissioners is we're dealing with other elected officials also, and they have the right to run their budget any way they want. We establish that budget. If they don't like it, they can go to the public and say, hey, they didn't give me enough money, so that's why I can't do what I needed to do. So working with the other elected officials through the budget, and then employees, we establish the rules and guidelines with employees. The third thing that I would say is public safety and health. You know, we're kind of into some pretty tough times right now, and there's a lot of people that are lagging behind, and whether we, whatever the cause of that is, the fact remains that we have a lot of people that are going to be disadvantaged here very shortly. And how are we going to manage to help them along and help them thrive in the future and not break the entire county? It's going to be a juggling act. I think that my experience for this primarily comes from horseshoing. I have dealt with so many different people on so many walks of life, and the only thing they have in common is horses. If you put all those people in a room and had any other conversation, you'd probably have a fight. But because they all love horses, we get to have some interesting conversations and talk about problems in a non-adversarial way. And so I can, I can bring people together and have those conversations and figure out what the best solution is for Whitman County.
Thank you. Chad, you'll start off the next one. There are 14 incorporated towns/cities in Whitman County. As a commissioner, how will you work with other elected officials in the county?
So, so far I've worked with a bunch of elected officials through the county in particular, and everybody's got their own idea on how things should run. Some interactions are really simple. They come in, request a budget amendment or whatever it is, and sometimes we can, we can do that, sometimes we can't. And that's where things start to get a little trickier. You have to be able to explain to them why we can't do that. Some of the problems we've had, not through the county so much, we have no direct influence over the cities. They have their own elected officials and their own laws, codes, and all that, so we can't really directly affect that. We can't help them in some of the ways, making sure county roads that are leading into their towns are effective and useful. But a lot of times with, with some of these elected officials, what we're doing is explaining them the rules, pointing them in the right direction, and letting them make up their mind on how that, how they're going to function within those rules. I don't want to explain to someone my interpretation of it. I would rather give them the information and let them figure out, well, does it fall within those guidelines or not? You know, even with the city of Pullman here, we need to help work within the city and create codes that aren't putting them in a disadvantage for growth, but we have no real say in what they do. We can only help them.
Thank you. Cody?
I think it's kind of a common perception maybe in, especially the outskirts of the county, that, that Pullman runs, Pullman runs the county population-wise. You know, the money, most of the money does come in from Pullman, but, you know, there's parts of this county, and we're such a sprawling county geographically, that feel unheard, neglected, in their, in their corner of the world. And I think just letting them know they're heard, reaching out to them, staying in contact, what can we do for you? You know, that servant mentality of, of, you know, we're here, how can we help? And that, that could be a scary thing coming from the government, but, but just, just knowing that they're heard and that we've heard their issues, and there is some opportunity for, you know, connecting them with amongst the departments. There's some .09 money opportunities, you know, should be put in for those that, depending on the need, that might apply for grants. There's lots of ways that we could, that we could, we could help every town in the county. Now, you know, dollars are limited, and, and they need to be used for their best intended purposes, but, but I think more of the reaching out and, and at least offering that help, offering an ear, and getting them to the right place.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to need some more questions, folks.
Cody, I think we have to ask each other questions. Whatever's dying on our minds.
Okay. The county is trying to collaborate with the city of Moscow on a bypass using San, San Kirkendall Road, sorry about that. What other cross-border collaborations would you encourage as a commissioner? Cody?
Yeah, roads, as that we, you know, share highways and some of that infrastructure, but, and then as Chad mentioned earlier, the aquifer, it's, it's in both of our best interests. The Whitman County, LeToa County, Pullman, Moscow, however you want to look at it, that we need to preserve that together. There's, there's, you know, really our jurisdiction stops at the county line, but there's no reason that we can't, you know, we can't collaborate with them on what's working for you, what's not working for you. We're very similar communities in that regard. We're, you know, Moscow, Pullman, are university towns with otherwise a very rural population around it. So I think the more collaboration that we can have, the better, and, and it's not to say, and I do want to touch on this because lately we've been compared, well, why aren't we operating as Moscow is operating? You know, they have this thriving downtown, and we are our own city of Pullman, we're our own county, and I do think we need to chart our own path, and what works for them may not work for us. But it's always good to have that, that open door in being willing to collaborate with your neighbors, so.
Chad?
Yeah, as I stated earlier, the Palouse Basin Aquifer encompasses Moscow, Pullman, Palouse, Genesee, Colton Union Town. The actual, the majority of the landmass of the aquifers is in Idaho, and the majority of the support for the Palouse Basin Aquifer is actually through the University of Idaho. And so we do have quite a bit of collaboration there. We're working with the city of Moscow, LeToa County, and several others, including the Nez Perce Tribe. The hard part comes when you're, it's easy to forget that we have two separate states and two separate counties, and there's a lot of different rules. So one of the challenges with, with the aquifer is that in Idaho, it's state law that they cannot transport water out of state for sale. So some of our challenges with that aquifer, we may end up having to work with LeToa County and change state law. I agree with Cody. We're two separate cities. Pullman can thrive on its own. There's other towns within Washington that are very similar. I mean, I was just down to Walla Walla yesterday, and Walla Walla is thriving. It's, it's a pretty neat town. Now granted, you have some other factors there, but then you look down at Milton Freewater, and Milton Freewater is there, but it's kind of a bedroom community. So it can't happen. We just got to figure out what sets Pullman apart and capitalize on that, and really sell Pullman as a community. You know, we need to be the friendliest, best place for businesses and families to come and want to stay and live and work, raise families, and keep their kids here.
Okay. Here's the infamous question. What's your policy? How do you feel about the wind farm, and what do you know about the wind farm policy?
Amy?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
So I was on the planning commission, I was the chair of the planning commission for several years, so I have some knowledge of what's going on. The interesting thing with the planning commission is, right now, no matter what anybody tells you, nobody knows what the planning commission is going to put out. They're still working on that. So right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern, waiting. My personal belief on wind farms is, I don't think they're efficient, I don't think they're sustainable, and I think the only way that they work is with large subsidies from the government. Those subsidies are being drawn back, and so we'll see how that all works out. I am very much in favor of personal property rights. If somebody wants to do something on their land that's not hurting their neighbors and doesn't cause other issues, go ahead and do it. If the government is subsidizing it, I believe that the people get some say in what's going on there. I think that the big problem with, with the current windmill is, as Cody stated earlier, there was some lack of forward-thinking. The code wasn't updated when it should have been. It could have been done a long time ago, but there was resistance to do that at the time. So right now, we're waiting to see what the planning commission comes up with, and once they have that down, probably the end of the year-ish, then we can move forward with other ideas on how that's going to work. But until then, I don't intend to speculate what the planning commission is going to do. As a commissioner, my role is to take the planning commission's recommendation and figure out whether we believe that's going to work. If I go in telling the planning commission, I think he should do this, then why even bother having the planning commission? I'm just taking my own opinion. I want to hear what the citizen board has to say to me before I make a decision on moving forward or not.
My, my feelings on wind farms are, and we're talking about one in particular, is that this is not the right project for this county, and, and I don't like them visually, and I don't like the price tag, the true price tag that comes with them. But I think is, where I, we all differ from Chad a little bit, I think as a county commissioner that their, the job, the planning commission is just offering, offering their opinion, and it is up to the commissioners to ultimately dictate what they'll put into ordinance. And I think the planning commission there, or I think the planning commission should be given a better directive as to what the county would like out of this project. What, we're so far behind on our zoning and our setbacks that, that we need to go forward and say, you know, as the, as a county, we don't want this wind farm in this location, and these are the reasons why. You know, the proximity to so many houses, the proximity to Camiak Butte, which is, you know, cherished by so many people, and I think we should protect those natural landmarks, and I think, I think we should come up with a, I think we should come up with zoning that, that isn't specific to wind, but, you know, how, how are we going to proceed ahead, and what are our setbacks going to be? I think it'd be some multiple of height from the property line. Right now, what you do on your property can affect what your neighbor does on theirs in the county, and, and we always have the option to change things. We always have the option to grant variances, and we can hear those things on an individual basis. But I think for this wind farm that we're speaking of specifically, Harvest Hills, that, that we need to get some good zoning on the books and, and let them go back through that process in, in line with what the county is actually want, what the county actually wants.
Okay. On a related topic, it says, one of the needs, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading. One of the needs for improving the electrical power transmitting process is modifying the permitting process. Do you have any comments about this?
I would assume that the electrical grid permitting process is probably above the county level, but I, that is, that is a total assumption. Now, what I will say for just the general county permitting process, that that has become a little more stringent over the years, and we should probably take a look at some of that, that we want, we want people to be able to use their own land, and we want responsible development, and, and we should cut any and all red tape that's involved with that and make that as simple as possible. We're, we're in a, we're in a county that, being part of the state of Washington, you know, we're pretty restrictive with our energy code guidelines, and there's a lot that goes into any new construction, which adds a lot to the cost of, of building a new residence or anything for that matter. But, but we could, we could be the most friendly that we could be and help ease that burden. And, and I think when you start doing like, things like that, you see some of the affordable housing issues be lessened, you know, the, it becomes less expensive for entrepreneurs to start a, to start a business out of a shop or out of a, out of an addition to the house, and, and we just need to do what we can. But I, but I would really imagine, and I'm sorry for not knowing, that, that the electrical grid is, is probably above the county level.
Chad?
Part of it depends on who, who owns the project and what the project is. So let's say, for instance, we have a private company that comes in and, wind, solar, it doesn't really matter. They're a private company, and they're building a grid that has to attach into the Avista's grid, or Wash, or not Washington Water Power, the, oh shoot, the, what's that? No, the Corps of Engineers, the, was it BPA, I believe?
Bonneville?
Yeah, Bonneville. So if it's private, they have their own permitting process, and they don't have as much leeway as, as like a Bonneville or an Avista. I absolutely despise the next word I'm about to say, and that's eminent domain. I hate that, but the, the big power grids do have that ability, where a private company actually has to follow the permit process, get right away from the landowners. So it's, it really depends, and I, Cody's right, it's kind of above Whitman County, but we can work with the power companies, the local power companies, Avista and Inland are the two primary ones with a few others here and there, and try to make things easier for them. And that doesn't mean that they just get to do whatever they want, but just cut the process and not make it drag out so long.
I am not going to read this entire card. I will pass it on to the candidates, but I will get, I will ask the question. Why don't we rail bank the Colfax, Albion, Pullman rail corridor and to utilize this valuable asset? It's, yeah, Chad?
So part of this goes back to my earlier statements about eminent domain. Part of the problem with the Pullman Colfax, or Pullman-Albion-Colfax Trail is there's a whole ton of disputes on who actually owns the land, and I am not in favor of wasting taxpayer dollars on lawsuits for, well, for trails. I think trails are important. I think they can be done. I believe that there have been trails that have been passed over in the recent past that I think were, could have been utilized. My understanding now is, and we'll have to actually see what the state does now with their budget problems the way they are. The state is trying to include trails along highway right-ofways. Now, there does present some interesting problems with that. I'm hoping that their idea is to create a good setback from people that are walking in high-speed traffic. from people that are walking in high-speed traffic. But those are some possibilities, and I think that they may be very good. My understanding, one in particular that I know of was between Meanie Town and Colton. Granted, it doesn't tie into the rest of the trail system, but it, it probably would've been a good thing for that community. Why it was denied in the past, I don't have an answer for you. If it came before me, I would seriously look at it and make sure there weren't other issues. You know, how much is the county gonna be on the hook for maintenance? Or is this a state thing? And I don't know, but these are not insurmountable problems. The access for the, for the Colfax, or Pullman-Albion-Colfax Trail is also really great. It goes through some really remote areas with limited access for EMS if there's issues. And there's a ton of bridges to rebuild out there. So, that's my opinion. I, if they, if a private company can do it, I'd be in support of it. But I'm not gonna commit hardback tax charges to that.
Cody?
Yeah, I, I, I think what the, what the county did collaboratively with like, the Chipman Trail, for instance, I think that was a really great thing for the community. Now, with that, there's some, there's some upkeep and maintenance issues and are one of our most shining examples of noxious weeds. But the more that we can get into recreation for the county, give our residents more to do, more spaces to utilize, I, I think that would be great. There, there are some carve-outs in the budget for, for recreation, you know, that are a fee off of this or that. And, and some of that money would be available, but it, it's probably not to the scale that would be needed to do, you know, the big bridge repairs and repaving of the trail. But, but I think looking at that, and if there was the right outpouring of support for a, a section to tie, you know, Pullman to Albion, or, you know, to Colfax, that, that would be a great thing for the county. And, and one thing that I'm kind of running on in general is that we need to do a better job as a county asking the state for some money back for, for things. And it could be a trail, it could be, it could be our roads and infrastructure. But we, we need to do a better job about using our voices in Olympia federally and trying to get the most back into the community that we can. And that'd be one thing I'd be aiming to do as a commissioner.
Okay. You've sort of touched on this in your opening remarks, but I have a question, so I'm gonna ask it. Is there anything the county commission can do to ease the burden of high property taxes?
I'm hopeful that people, especially who saw that big bump, will see some ease this year, if, if everything is done right, which might be a big ask, considering the last 20 years. But if everything's done right, all, we're, we're being told this year that the market values have all been brought to the current level. And if that's the case, then the levied amount will have to go down because that total levied value can only go up, on existing property, can only go up by 1% in a given year. So, for everybody who saw that big bump a year ago, two years ago, that should be taken down this year with the whole county-wide assessment. And if not, then, I was telling someone, I think the pitchforks will probably be out and I'll be right there with them. But, you know, that, that doesn't do anything for the Pullman businesses that closed two years ago, that, that saw that huge increase of taxes. Or to an individual, it, you know, it, it probably priced some of our neighbors and friends out of their homes. But, and all of that is really unfortunate. And it ultimately, it's a, it's a big slide on the county that it got to that level. So, you know, I really think we need to be, we need to be very informed, you know, even on our tax bill. If, if you did have a big bump and it's still hot, much higher than it should be, then you need to use, you need to go in front of the commissioners, the Board of Adjustment, and you need to ask and tell them that this isn't right. So, we need to, we need to inform people that, and, and, and the, they've done a good job at the county, sending out letters with those statements to say that that is an option. But, but it's really unfortunate that it happened and I'm a big advocate for everyone getting their taxes knocked back down.
Chad?
So, the, one of the problems with property taxes is, is the counties are a little bit at the mercy of the state on what they decide they're going to do. Our county, years ago, and this started probably two assessors back, they failed. They did not do their job properly and they let the property values stay low. When, when our current assessor, Rayleigh, got in, she was told she had to raise all the property taxes one year. And Rayleigh said, "No, we're gonna do it over three years." So, you know, I still don't like it. I agree with Cody, it's, it's, it's a pain, it's dumb. But that's where we are. I think Rayleigh's done a great job of trying to spread that out over some time instead of instant sticker shock. This year, things are gonna kind of mellow out. Everybody's got, you know, kind of up to their correct level now. And you kind of have to think of the, of the property taxes as a pool. If everybody's property values goes up the same amount, then nobody will pay more than they paid the year before. If some peoples go up more than others, then it's, it's kind of a percentage of that pool, basically. So, if your property taxes, your valuation goes up a lot more than everybody else's, then yours, your property taxes will also go up. So, it, it's kind of a, it's sticker shock to see your valuation go so high. But it doesn't necessarily mean your taxes will go up immediately. Now, the problem with that, though, is next year with the millage. What is the state gonna do? The state also gets to dictate what they're doing with property taxes, unfortunately. And so, the hard part is going to be working with our other elected officials over in western Washington, or local elected, and trying to get Olympia to understand that they're killing the state. And, and there are some opportunities to meet with other elected officials throughout the state and see if we can convince them.
Okay, yeah, why not?
All right. Oh, cool.
We have time.
Yeah.
So, so I'll, I'll disagree with Chad a little bit. And, well, Rayleigh has done a great job, especially compared to previous, previous assessors. But the, the issue did arise from that, trying to break it down into three years, which is, which is illegal, according to the state of Washington. Market values are supposed to move every year with market price. Should, should that happen, that the levied amount would, if market values go up big in a year, then the levied amount would go down. Because we're reaching that maximum budget that we're allowed to take in a, in a given year. And that can increase by 1% on existing property. So, had that not taken place and had the county done that all in one year, then nobody would've saw that big bump. There wouldn't have been that sticker shock. And, and we would've seen probably, from the Board of Commissioners, a 1% increase on our property taxes. And that's as, as a, as a pool, as a collective. It's not to the individual. But I think in a, kind of a bigger issue as a, as a taxpayer and, is that, I don't think we should just assume that we raise taxes by 1% every year just because we can. I think, I think everybody is charged a lot of money and, and, you know, I wanna see that I'm getting something for that dollar, or hear where that's going. You know, if, if it's to, for more, better salaries for the county, then all right, you might have me on that one. But, but I, I don't want it just to be an automatic 1% increase just 'cause they can.
So, the, the reality of it is, is, Cody's kind of confused the system. There's a visual inspection that's required once every three years.
Six years?
Every six years? Every year, everybody's valuations go up and they use a formula for that. It's not that it's split up, it's, it's more on the, the visual valuation. And what Rayleigh, from my understanding, is Pullman, for some reason, a long time ago, was split up, which is not fair to do. And so, she is, it sounds like she's currently figuring out a different system. So, that way, Pullman, being the largest town in the county, is evaluated the same, at the same time, every time. And then you split up the rest of the county. You don't, you can't get to every single house every year with, Villal county can do that. That, the amount of money that would take to do a visual inspection every year is just, would be crazy. But yes, so we need to, we need to figure out a slightly better system. Again, the assessor is an elected position. And as an elected official, the other elected officials have no say over what they do. The only say we have is with their employees. The county commissioners set the rules for how the employees are to be treated, not what the assessor or, or the district court or superior court is gonna do. We give them a budget and tell them the rules for the employees, and that is our role as a county commissioner. And then on top of that, you also have to, as a commissioner, you don't get to make the rules by yourself. You have to convince at least one other commissioner that this is the right thing to do.
It's a difficult problem, as in a person who got like, ah, tax bill of a couple of years of last year. Yeah, it was like, wait a minute. Yeah, so. We have another question. Thank you, whoever wrote it. What do you identify as the key issues confronting Whitman County?
Key issues, huh?
Yeah, Chad?
I would say that the, the biggest issue with, in Whitman County right now is just managing our growth, or lack of managing the growth. Obviously, Pullman is the largest economic driver within the county and therefore kind of bears the brunt of a lot of problems, including growth. And I think if we can manage to get things under control, you know, businesses don't, they don't like to grow when, when there's chaos. And unfortunately, for a lot of different reasons, Pullman's had some chaos going on within the government. Whitman County has had some problems also. We need to get that kind of nailed down. As commissioner, we can deal with all the stuff in the, in the county and keep things consistent. That doesn't mean not changing, but it also means, if you're going to change, you need to sell it to the people before you do it. People don't like surprises, and I, and don't, definitely don't like surprises. So, if we're going to do something different, before we vote on that, we need to put it out to the public. I think Pullman is working on the right track now. They, they're getting some of their, their issues solved. But again, there's not a ton we can do from the county perspective, other than encourage them, and if they need help in some fashion, we'll listen, we'll talk to them, we'll help them. But tax dollars, you know, we can't just spend however we want. There's a lot of rules and regulations on how those are to be spent.
Was that a, was that a Pullman specific question?
No, it's, it's, uh... I'm all... Oh. What do you identify as the key issues confronting Whitman County?
Yeah, the, I, I think helping our, our small businesses, as Chad was talking about, is, and our growth is, is a huge issue. I'm trying to remind everyone that this is, we're going into a one-year special election. So, time is very limited, even sitting in that chair. The winner, the winner of this race won't necessarily be around to see the fruits of whatever they put forward. So, I think, but I, I do think that as a county, we're, we do a very poor job of having an informed electorate and that we need to record the county meetings, we need to change the meeting times, if needed, to get more people involved. And so, those issues are coming forward. So, there is this dialogue from constituent to county commissioner that these are the problems we're facing. Here's how you can help us, or give us a solution. I, I think you would've seen a lot of input from county businesses, from city businesses. I think the taxpayers would probably be beaten down the doors and we could've, you know, kind of confronted some of these tax issues years ago. So, I, we're not short on issues by any means. And, but I think, I think the way to address that and to fix that is by having this open dialogue and, and a real back and forth. And as commissioners, they, and hopefully I myself, need to be, and stay, get and stay in touch with our constituents.
Okay, any more questions? Well, I have one. On the news lately, it's been hit a couple of times. They're talking about other parts of the country. But what about Whitman County? How are the farmers doing with the problems that, with what's going on right now? Are, is there, have you seen an increase in bankruptcies and farm closures? Or whatever the word is?
Yeah, the, on, on the national scale, that, that has been mainly an issue related to soybeans and that, that China, the largest buyer of US soybeans, hasn't bought a single bean this year. So, you know, thankfully, we're a county that we live and die by wheat and that, that isn't the case with wheat because we have different buyers. But, you know, farmers in general have been hard-hit on low prices and high commodity, or in high input prices, chemicals and diesel and everything else. So, I have not heard a lot of bankruptcies, but I know, I know that everybody's a little tight right now. And, and they're looking for some help from somebody at some level. And, and as a county, well, what can we do? Well, we can be, we can be yelling, again, at the top of our lungs to the, to the feds, to Olympia, to Olympia especially, that, you know, they can't be paying almost $4 a gallon just for off-road diesel and, and still expect to, you know, turn, turn a profit that would make them be successful. So, there, there are things we can do. A lot of it is on a much bigger scale than what we're at. So, but I, I think they're looking for help and, and hopefully we can get them some soon.
So, one of the issues with farming, you have to remember, it's a commodity. And like all commodities, they're kind of a, somewhat of a finite resource. So, yes, the tariffs have had an effect. But you also have to remember that if, if, say, China, for instance, decides not to buy our commodity, they're gonna go to, say, Australia or Brazil. When that, when they go to Brazil, they're buying that commodity from, that somebody else had been buying. So, now, say, if it was India had been buying from Australia, now they're gonna be buying from the United States. It's kind of a revolving circle. That doesn't change the fact that there are problems. You know, wheat prices are the same now as they were in the early 80s and maybe further back, but that's as far back as my recollection will go. So, farmers right now are depending upon making a, a better product. So, that's either getting better yields per acre, so they can still make money, or that means getting higher proteins in your wheat, depending on type of wheat. You know, most of it is, is soft white, it's, a lot of it's going to Asia from here. But there's also some, some of your harder wheats and your dark northern springs that are, they're protein-driven. And a lot of our wheat is being bought and then cut with subpar wheat from other places because really, our proteins are so high that they need to be brought back down. And again, like Cody said, there's not a ton we can do. We gotta be supportive, see if we can come up with some creative ideas and, you know, see if we can, and help, help them in some fashion. But the big problem right now is stockpiles. There is a lot of leftover wheat from last year. And it's, it's hard to sell that when there's a glut on the market already. And commodities are just a strange place that you could spend a lifetime studying and still not understand. and still not understand. I'm there. I don't get it very well yet. I'm trying.
Yeah, it's confusing. Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll do closing remarks, and we'll start with you, Cody.
Well, thank you again, everyone, for coming out. And, and I just want to, I want to emphasize that I am in this race to, to make Whitman County better. I don't, I don't want to be a career politician. I, I'm kind of living my best life right now with a, with a young family. I'm limited on time, and this is not, myself seeking this role is not because I, I necessarily, I don't necessarily, you know, want all the extra responsibility, but after going through an appointment process and seeing the issues, and the main thing is talking to residents of this county, and I think along the way, I have joined so many social groups and, and met people from all walks of life, and I've had coffee at every place you can imagine, that there's real issues out there and people aren't feeling heard. So I think I'm in the position now in my life where, you know, I really value, not just, I've always valued Whitman County, but I really value with small kids, I look at the parks a different way, I look at trails a different way, I look at our library the different, a different way. And, and we could be improving upon all of it. And that doesn't mean sending a, having a budget that's through the roof, you know, there's some small incremental changes that could be done. Like I've said with, I think the county's biggest problem is not pushing record on the, on the meetings and, and seeking public involvement and that engagement. And, and I want to be someone, I'm, I'm, I'm nothing special. I, you know, I think anybody could promote and do what I'm saying, but, you know, I'm, I've stepped up and I'm in it this far, and, and at this point, I hope to see it through. So I really, I really appreciate again you guys coming out and listening to us, and I hope if you have any more questions, you'll reach out, and I hope I can have your support coming up here in a couple of weeks with the vote. So, thank you.
Chad.
So, again, somewhat like Cody, you know, I had a really business that's been doing better than it's ever has. I had all kinds of opportunities to do a whole bunch of other things. And I chose to do this to try to make Whitman County better. I felt like I could make a difference here and leave a better place for my daughter to, to raise a family in one day. And I finally decided to do this simply because I felt like I could make the difference. I could stand up and be a voice for people. I've worked with people from all different backgrounds, and I'm not a go-along-get-along person. I have my own opinion and I'm willing to state that opinion. But having said that, you know, it's, it's not an easy job. You know, half the people hate you immediately for any reason, and, and that's okay. You've just got to have thick skin and big shoulders, and, you know, I can, I can do that. The other trick to being a commissioner, in my opinion, is you have to get some sort of a consensus. That doesn't mean you sacrifice your beliefs, your ideals and morals, but you have to be able to convince at least one of the other two commissioners that you have the best idea. And having worked with a whole ton of different groups, I've worked in construction, ag, fire departments, all kinds of stuff, I've worked with these people all over, and you got to have some sort of a common ground and build that relationship before something big comes up. And I think that I can, I can, I have done that and I will continue to do that and continue to influence the other two commissioners and the things that I think are important to Whitman County, and we can make a difference and keep this county growing and thrive again.
Thank you. I would like to thank the candidates for participating and everyone who attended this evening. And please, if sometime in the future, all of a sudden you go, why didn't I ask that question? Reach out to the candidates and ask that question. Just don't guess.
We're not hard to find, good votes easier.
Yeah. Okay, there is still time to register to vote. You, the last day to register by mail or online is October 27th. We have registration forms available in the back of the room, and we will be happy to assist you in any way. Ballots will be mailed hopefully by October 27th, uh, October 17th. For the primary, they came out early, surprise to everyone. If you don't get a ballot, you can go to votewa.gov and print one out, or go to your county elections office and get one. Please don't forget to sign your ballots. And this is brand new, we haven't said this much before, to ensure your ballot is counted, use one of the drop boxes provided by the county, or make sure you put your ballot in the mail by Friday, the 31st. Because it has to be postmarked. And nothing gets postmarked here in Pullman or Raleigh, they all go to Spokane. So be, be early. Thank you.
Don't trust Spokane Post Office. If you can drop it off, please do.
Yeah. So, thanks again.